Thank you again. Thank you very much. I bring this to the state resolution presented by State Representative Mike Andrade to retire, Monster Fire Chief Dave Pelk and 2019 Monster Police Officer of the Year Jonathan Hernandez. Representative?
Thank you, Town Council President, the rest of the Town Council gentlemen and madam, and our clerk treasurer Wendy Miss. I see our town manager here and everybody else who's in attendance. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. Normally, I would do this resolution in the General Assembly in the State House and bring them to the chambers and honor them accordingly. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we were not able to do this this year, but I still wanted to make sure that the appropriate accolades and recognition were able to be granted to Chief Dave Pelk for his 50-plus years of service with our Monster Fire Department. So I have in here two resolutions. So let me get the one appropriate here for Chief Pelk. So Indiana House of Representatives, State of Indiana General Assembly, House Resolution Number 37, signed by your servant, Speaker of the House Todd Houston, Caroline Spas, Clerk of the House, introduced by Representative Mike Andrade, adopted by the voice vote on April 12th during the first regular session of the 122nd General Assembly. A House Resolution congratulating Dave Pelk on the occasion of his retirement, whereas Monster Fire Department Chief Dave Pelk retired from the Monster Fire Department January 31st, 2021, after 50 years of service, whereas Mr. Pelk joined the Monster Fire Department on June 1st of 1971, whereas Mr. Pelk served the Monster Fire Department with a commitment to excellence and was promoted to Lieutenant in 1979, Captain in 1980, Battalion Chief in 1983, and was appointed Chief in 2014, whereas Mr. Pelk surfaced as Head of Training for 50 years in the department and worked closely with the Monster Public Works Department as the Building Manager for all town and properties, whereas Mr. Pelk was a member of the team that created the local mass dispensing and vaccination plan for Lansing and Monster, which supported public health efforts in the community, whereas Mr. Pelk has served the Monster community as a M-A-B-A-S, was called Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Advisor for the last eight years, and was on the committee for the Falling Heroes Memorial at Wicker Park, and whereas the Monster Town Council honored Mr. Pelk by declaring February 1st, 2021, as Dave Pelk Day for his many years of service to his community. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the General Assembly of the State of Indiana, recognition for Monster Fire Department Chief Dave Pelk, his retirement. I will put my face mask on if I can find it. Here we go. And I'm going to take this resolution right now and give it to our clerk treasurer so that you guys could be able to give it to Chief Dave Pelk. If I need to go with him in person and take it to his house, I'm more than welcome to. Do you know, do you want me to do that?
Thank you, Representative. I appreciate it.
And we have one more here. This is for Officer Jonathan Hernandez. He's won the Officer of the Year Award for the American Legion First District, so I have resolution as well for him. Indiana House of Representatives, State of Indiana, Indiana General Assembly, House Resolution Number 36, introduced by Representative Mike Andrade, adopted by voice vote on April 12th, 2021 during the first regular session of the 122nd General Assembly. A House Resolution congratulating Monster Police Officer Jonathan Hernandez, whereas Monster Indiana Police Officer Jonathan Hernandez was recently named the department's 2019 Officer of the Year, whereas the Officer of the Year is selected by fellow peers in the department for an officer's service in action in the previous year, whereas Officer Hernandez is a patrol officer, field training officer, evidence technician, and member of the department's Honor Guard, whereas Officer Hernandez volunteers and participates in multiple community programs each year, including Community Readers and the Cop and Kids Holiday Shopping Program for children's in need, whereas Officer Hernandez cares deeply for the city of Monster and the communities in which he serves, and whereas Officer Hernandez is a servant of recognition for his service as a police officer and his many contributions in his local community. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the General Assembly of the State of Indiana that Officer Jonathan Hernandez is a recipient of this great Resolution Number 36. And I will take this at this time to Officer Hernandez. I will finish with this. It's an honor to be here with our Town Council. I truly believe that we have the finest when it comes to our police department and our fire department, our Chief Mark Hyduk, Monster Fire Chief, and of course, our Chief Chaco from our police department. You know, they have been very receptive with me and I've worked along with them as the member of the Veterans and Public Safety Committee in the General Assembly. You know, we've been able to have several meetings so that we can continue to work together to make sure that our communities are safe here in our town of Monster, but also how do we work along with our neighboring communities? It's not about what we could do only here for our town, but what can we do with our neighboring communities so we could work together? I truly believe that we could do more as a team, and you know, Chief Chaco and Chief Hyduk have shown a very, very just leadership skills when it comes to how they run their departments, and that is very commendable for what you guys do on a daily basis, including what was going on and has been going on with the kid who's 12 years of age, who's went missing 24 hours ago and probably going on 48 hours, and how you guys have gone out of your way with your departments to help with that search, what happened recently with the Gary Fires, I think there was 22 of them, Monster Fire Department went in and said, "We're going to go all the way over there and take some of our firefighters to go over there and help out." Whatever the situation is, our first responders in the town of Monster are always willing to go beyond, so that is very commendable. Thank you for what you guys do. Thank you to our clerk treasurer once again, our town manager, our president, Town Council, council gentlemen and madam, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and for giving me the opportunity to give these resolutions to so very, very well deserving people today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the kind words, Representative. All right, that will bring us down to public hearing ordinance 1828. Additional appropriations? Is there anyone that wishes to speak to that public hearing? Please step over to the podium at this time. I don't see anyone that wishes to speak. I will close the public hearing ordinance 1828. Additional appropriations? It will open the public hearings on the Community Development Block Grants. What words I have to read for this? Each bring the Lake County Community Economic Development Department applies to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the new funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. One of the applications requirements is to hold a public hearing to the communities where the CDBG funding is allocated in order to obtain funds from the local citizens and the purpose use of the funding. Year FY 2021, the total Monster's CDBG allocation is approximately $103,712. Most common use for the CDBG funding is for infrastructure, including street reconstruction, sanitary sewers, waterline extensions, storm drainage improvements, sidewalk projects to remove architectural barriers slash handicap access such as curb cuts and wheelchair ramps. CDBG funds also may be used to eliminate the slums and blight through the demolition of unsafe buildings and other clearance activities. CDBG-funded infrastructure projects may only be done in areas where the community is at least 42% low slash moderate income according to the HUD guidelines. In most cases, an income survey must be done to quantify the areas for funding eligibility. Income information taken by the survey is strictly confidential and is used solely for the purpose of determining the area's eligibility or CDBG funding. Handicap access projects and demolition may be done anywhere in the community without the need for area income determination. Public hearing is just the start of the application process for Lake County. There are a series of legal advertisements and comment terms that take place during the summer prior to the final grant approval from HUD in late August. New CDBG funding is released to the county and its entitlement communities on or around September 1st and needs to be expended by June 15th of the following year. After public comment tonight, three documents need to be read and adopted: The Affirmative Action Program, Section 3 Understanding, and the Resolution authorizing the city-town executives to submit a project proposal for CDBG funding. Final project applications and supporting documentation needs to be submitted no later than May 21, 2021 for the review by Lake County. The floor is open for any comments at this time. If anybody wishes to speak in regards to this block grant. All right, I don't see anybody coming forward. I will close the public hearing on the Community Development Block. I bring it down to public comment. The first public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. Chair is all discretion. They recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time and may end up at their public session. All speakers will be timed by the clerk treasurer. Of course, in the meeting, you should not exceed 20 minutes of a comment. Also, it's submitted electronically. If you have a question or comment about an item on the agenda, please email a question or comment to Anderson@monster.org, which ensures that all submissions are shared with elected officials of the town, as submissions will be also entered into the minutes of the meeting. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy. If there is anybody that wishes to speak tonight, please step up their podium, state your name and address. Anybody? All right, I will close the open to the public. We bring it down to consent agenda.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
If you're second.
I second. Sorry.
Are there any comments?
Wendy, is that the new reporting, starting May 1st, the new report for the claim docket?
Yes.
Okay.
It's our new software.
New software, new report.
Yes, new layouts. Yes.
Okay. Very good. I have no other questions.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five zero.
Brings us to business. Ordinance 1826, creation of an ERP fund, second reading.
Mr. President, I would make a motion and that we adopt the introduced ordinance 1822, second reading as presented. I'll second.
1826.
1826, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. Bring this up. Ordinance 1828, additional appropriations, second reading.
Mr. President? I would move that we approve introduced ordinance 1828.
If you're second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five zero.
Ordinance 1829, creation of a CDBG slash COVID fund, second reading.
Mr. President, I will move to adopt ordinance 1829 as presented.
If you're second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five zero.
That brings us to new business resolution 18, oh, excuse me, 2081, 2021 Sidewalk Raising Program.
This is an annual resolution that we bring for your consideration. Sidewalk raising is one of the tools we have in our toolbox to level off and correct known tripping and safety hazards in our sidewalks, and we would like your permission to continue to use the contract with Level Right through the end of this year.
Thank you, Dustin. Let's say you.
Mr. President, I would move to authorize the extension of the sidewalk raising program contract with Level Right concrete through December 31st, 2021.
If you're second?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Can you give us an example, Dustin, when this type of raising happens and not a replacement of a sidewalk?
Sure. So if you were to look at the amount that we've done in the past, this is a sliver of the work we do. It's context dependent. As I understand it, I'm not the person that does the raising, but it's usually when there's not an underlying catalyst for the buckle, like a tree root or, you know, some washout underneath. It's just a settling. So if you have minor settling, you can raise that up if there's no crack in the pore, right? So it doesn't make a lot of sense to take a cracked square of concrete and raise it up, but if it's intact and it's just settled, that's a useful tool that we have so we don't have to take out something that's in one piece and replace it. More often than not, what we'll do is we'll have to replace it, but this is a useful tool in the toolbox.
Okay. And it doesn't happen that often, seems like?
In relation to the other work that we do? No. This is not a majority of the work.
Okay. I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right.
I have a question in that picture. Can you include adoption of the resolution in the motion? Did you not? How did you motion it?
Yeah, I did not include adoption of the resolution. I would be happy to amend my motion to include adoption of.
Perfect. Thank you.
Who seconded that?
Mr. Gardner did.
Oh, I did? Okay, then I amend my second.
Okay.
I forgot.
All right, we're ready for roll call. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Very good.
That brings us to 2021 Community Development Block Grant.
Great. So tonight, we have a project idea that we'd like to bring for your consideration. This is the application by indicating the a or n, you're not guarantee to get these funds, but this is what we would like to do with the funds that have been allocated for the town of Monster. We, in the past, utilized some of the Community Development Block Grant funds to attend to alleys in the northwest section of town. A common refrain is that there is a target-rich environment there, and we have made a dedicated effort to dedicate resources in that area. This is one of those areas in town that we don't need to do a salary survey. We can expend the funds for alley resurfacing in this area. We did this two years ago with success, and what we did was we piggybacked some additional town funds with the CDBG funds to do a single mobilization and do many alleys, and that is again what we're presenting with you this evening. So the total project amount would exceed the CDBG amount, but we have found that there are certain efficiencies in scale and mobilization. So if we have the opportunity, that seemed to have worked out well for the residents in the town in the past. So the proposed project, we're looking at, you know, again, that northwest corner of town, you know, we have West Holman, East Forest, north of Adelaide, north Belmont, south of Belmond, between Holman and Manor, north Broadmore, south Belmont, between Holman and Manor, north Sunnyside, south Fairbanks, between Holman and Manor, and between Hollywood Avenue and Kinsley Place. So these five alleys have been identified by our Public Works Department, who work very closely and effectively with our on-call engineer, S D H, and Tom Vanderwood, who did the yeoman's work in putting this memo together, as well as the documents. So thank you to Tom. So our total project is just shy of $300,000, and, you know, 105 of that would come from the Community Development Block Grant. These will be a mix of previous pavement, so porous asphalt, and your traditional HMA, hot mix asphalt. The deliverable will be as a driver or a consumer equivalent. So what we'd like to do is, we have three recommendations. We have the public hearing. By motion and voice vote, we would appreciate considering adopting the Affirmative Action Program in Section 3 Understanding, which is necessary administrative steps to qualify for the grant. And then, if you so choose, by motion and roll call, we would ask that you consider adopting Resolution 2082 to authorize the Town Council Presidents to submit this project proposal to the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
I will take the blame for not saying anything months ago, but I've been hoping that the alley that is north of Bridge Road, north of Bridge Road between State Line and Holman be included on this list. I didn't say anything. It's my fault, but next time around, I shouldn't really bad shape.
Okay.
It runs parallel to Bridge Road.
Yes, sir. I know the exact alley that you're talking about.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to adopt the Affirmative Action Program and the Section 3 Understanding.
I'll second. Great. Any discussion on this?
Counselor Schoen?
Yep.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five zero.
Mr. President, I would move to adopt Resolution 2082 to authorize the Monster Town Council President to submit a project proposal for the CDBG for fiscal year 2021.
If you're second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Dustin, I had, was just curious about the porous asphalt versus HMA. How do you make the decision of which to do in the northeast corner? I know we use the porous asphalt. I've walked those alleys a bunch of times. It seemed to be after the winter still. And I noticed they seem like they're more costly than the HMA. So I'm just curious how you make that decision and?
In the past, we've looked at where there have been drainage issues. So depending on the frequency of use, the intensity of use in the alleys, we'd look at either the crushed gravel that we used effectively. Last time, we did alleys kind of in the north central portion of town, or the porous asphalt that we've used in the past in other places. So typically where there is a drainage concern is how we determine.
You voted for it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I'm favorable to this especially because it alleviates back a rear yard flooding which is one of the main concerns. Thank you for being this.
Any questions?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
President Kulturitis?
Yes.
This is five zero, and as a note to the counselors, all of you need to sign three copies of this. So it's certainly to really.
Don't leave.
Exactly.
Okay. That will bring us to the Main Street Station Architectural Service Contract.
So this goes back to the construction agreement that the town struck with NICD in 2018, 19? A while ago, before the station area was completely designed. One of the things that the town was very interested in was making sure that we had a material opportunity to collaborate on the form, bulk, and scale of the Main Street Station. And with the award by NICD to the joint venture of FH Passion and Ragnar Benson, that work is being done very, very expeditiously, and we have a window right now to substantively comment and collaborate on that building, that terminal station, how it will look to some extent. And, you know, that is a very technical piece of collaboration because you have a building footprint that has been designed, kind of backed into, given the utility infrastructure that's planned, and the property that's been acquired through the environmental impact statement and property acquisition process. So there's a real, there's a real narrow gap of daylight where we can influence, control on this. So we have to have a very strong team to go in. We can't really kind of go by feel and, you know, say, "It looks like this. It looks like that." So we went out to RFP and we had a number of very successful bids. CDM Smith was ranked by our panel as the most responsive and best able to collaborate on this work. What we have here is, because we don't know what that collaboration will be, maybe the architectural features that NICD is going to propose are actually really good, but I'm not going to, you know, take it on an article of faith. So we have a contract that not to exceed a cost of $50,000. Where did that number come from? It's a real good guess. It's a guess. It could be much less. It could be more, depending on the vision that the town has for what that building will be and what it'll look like, and depending on where the jumping off point is from where what NICD has, and we haven't seen what NICD has there. So this is really just kind of a shot in the dark. Certainly, they won't spend more than this without your permission. We'll certainly not allow that to happen without a far heads up for you to say, "Whoa, pump the brakes on that. This is not going how we thought it was going to go." But given the circumstances, the time, this is what we have. I think CDM Smith is going to do a really good job for us. They're a very reputable full-service engineering and landscape architecture company. Their body of work has a number of station areas like this that they presented, so they are very familiar with the process. They're familiar with the actors in the joint venture. So I have every anticipation that things will go smoothly. So we would ask that if you still want to collaborate on that station design, you allow us to enter into agreement with CDM Smith to do that work for a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Mr. President, I would make a motion and we authorize the town manager to enter into the attached agreement with professional service contract with CDM Smith Incorporated to provide architectural services for the Main Street commuter rail station at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? So we got, and CSK also provided response. Could you characterize sort of the difference between across the three responses?
You know, I don't want to, you know, speak ill of any other firm. I would just say CDM Smith had the deepest bench and the deepest experience with station areas of this type and produced the highest level of competence.
Okay, and it says also in the memo that what is in the 30% plan is 800 square foot with precast concrete and glazed aluminum storefronts.
Mm-hmm.
Can we have an idea of what we're looking for? Much bigger, different materials?
Yeah, I think the size of the building is going to be tough to modify. It'll It'll be the, the, the architectural finishes, the color palette, the finishing materials, the cladding, things like that, that we're really going to be able to have a substantive feel on.
Okay.
Because, you know, there, there's been property acquired for certain utilities. Those utilities are already being designed. You kind of build backwards from that, the envelope of that building. So if we were to say, you know what, we really love a 5,000 square foot structure. That train, I'm trying really hard not to make the pun. It, 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 that, that opportunity is not available. But there's a lot of things that we can do to brand in collaboration with N I C D and make sure that station is consistent with the development standards that we have for all the other buildings that we have in town.
Yeah, well, I'm supportive of this. Clearly, it's, I mean, train stations don't go away. So this will be there forever. So we'd like to have whatever influence we can on what it looks like.
My, my question, or a couple of questions. One, the funding for this 50,000, where, where would that come from?
It could come from a number of different sources. It could come from our, our low economic development. It could come from the T I F, are the two that come to top of mind right now.
The other thing is, again, there is a previous agreement, or at least we've had conversations with N I C D on that we were going to do this, right? So this, you, you mentioned a little bit of a shot in the dark during your presentation. This really isn't a shot in the dark. We've had conversations with the group and this is, they, they know this is coming, correct?
They are aware that it is coming. I have with staff been in contact with the joint venture, and they understand that this is something that Munster cares deeply about and will, what will force, yeah.
But, but the concern is they're moving pretty fast. So we have to get on top of this thing pretty fast also to get our input, at least listen to, and that they can't come back and say, guess what, this was nice, but you should have came back to us two months ago.
They are acting with a sense of significant urgency, and I'd like to be a good partner to that. But I don't think that we should allow ourselves to be kind of marginalized when, to Counselor Tulowitzki's point, train stations last forever and don't go away. And I don't think the opportunity should be missed.
Very good.
Mr. President.
I'm done.
Okay, if I may add, this, conversations were had quite a while ago. I was present, Dustin was present, and we expressed how we definitely wanted any buildings landscaping to meet our standards and that we wanted to have our, you know, we wanted to represent our community. And then things started moving, and it looks like, looked like we were possibly going to get left out of that, correct?
That is a fair characterization.
Okay, so Dustin and I were always under the impression that we would definitely have some, not just some, but quite a bit of input into this. And so now it's really important that we move forward this right away and jump in, even though they're already started. But we were promised, I don't know if promises are right word, but I would have taken it as a promise that we would have our say in this building and others that they're building, you know, anything else that they do, so.
I, I would say when the, the C E O of the Northwest Indiana Community Transit District says you can do it, that there's an intent that you can do it.
Right.
I have one other question. I'm sorry. This is for the Main Street Station.
Yes, sir.
The Ridge Road Station, which is much smaller footprint and everything else, is, this isn't including any of that?
There is not going to be a station structure at Ridge Road. And we have, we, we have had and will continue to have an opportunity to comment on those plans from a technical, constructability, feasibility, drainage, infrastructure, certainly. Yeah, we have the opportunity to contribute and comment on that.
Okay, but it's not a station per se.
Yeah, this is, this is only about Main Street.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Dustin, the plant commissioner, that we say so in regards to the station.
There, there, there is some land use that the plant commission will have an opportunity to weigh in. They have to replat the parcels that will eventually be transferred to N I C D. Right now, the town is in, maintains ownership of what's ours. N I C D needs land from the town. And we have both formally and informally committed to transferring that property one way or another, some as gratis, some, you know, drainage easements and things like this, some for a transfer of purchase, but that has not been executed yet. And when it is, there's a number of parcels. And we all know that when there's a number of parcels, you want to do something, you got to replat. And that's what.
This is, it's an effect gives us the timeframe that we need to allow this company to kind of lay out of its own course.
Yes.
So they may be rushing at high speed, but we can't move. That's basically anything can, so we actually have to program the land.
Mm-hmm.
So sooner we can get this in, the better off, and better off we're going to be.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
Are any other questions?
Only as far as terminology is concerned. I had, I became confused with some professional work I was doing last year about the term depot and the term station. And there is a station north of Bridge Road. Stations where the train stops and picks up passengers. The depot is a building where you can go in and buy tickets and things of that sort. So, you know, officially, we'll have a depot at Main Street and just sort of an open loading ramp sort of at, at Ridge Road.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, my only other question, there's an extensive contract, it's 11 pages. Just wanted to check, Mr. Westland, if you previewed that and see any issues with the contract.
I, I'm not going to ask Dave to comment. This is my fault. We, this came in very quickly. Dave has not had a chance to review it because I did not give it to him ahead of time. So that's on me. Certainly will not sign anything without the benefit of our, our attorney's review.
Do we need to update the motion or just take that as?
It's counsel's pleasure.
Did I, made the motion?
Okay, Gardner did.
Then I'll, I'll amend my motion pending Attorney Weston's review of the, of the contract.
I will second.
Thank you. Second that, and then, oh, then my second, yes.
All right, any other discussion?
All right, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five two zero.
All right, that brings us down to the Public Works lease, a purchase slash lease, new vector combinations or winner.
So this is just kind of the second step to what you authorized previously. You, you authorized the, the, the purchase of that piece of infrastructure. Now you're authorizing the financing of it with publicfinance.com, which is the same entity that we use for our police cruisers. So they, they know us, we know them, and their rates are good.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to authorize the town, the town council president, clerk treasurer, and the town manager to execute the lease purchase documents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on this? Here on.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki? And President Kulturitis?
Yes. Bring this out to RFQ Commercial Janitorial Services.
All right, so for a number of years, we've used Purcell Commercial Cleaning and Supply. That contract was coming to an end in March. We went out to bid, and as you can see, the bid prices with a modified scope came in significantly higher. That modified scope was a result of a working group of users in town hall, cross-departmental. So we, we got together, many thanks to Wendy and Tricia and I issue from my office, working together and collaborating with Public Works and the Police Department to talk about the building, the building's condition, what we want to see, the standards we want to hit. So I, I feel very comfortable with the scope of work that that group put together. We went out and we received bids that reflected that more robust scope of work. So when Purcell came in at $76,000 generally, annually, we thought we should actually take a look and make sure if it's more cost-effective to hire someone to do this as a town employee. That analysis bore out that it was indeed not. It, it is cheaper hypothetically, if the contractor delivers, to contract this work out. So there was some skepticism of using Purcell again based on, you know, less than stellar reviews by that user group that we had. We brought Mr. Purcell in. He graciously accepted the offer to talk about this. He brought his operations managers. We laid out those expectations clearly. He committed to being able to meet those expectations. And with that commitment, we would recommend that you allow us to enter into an agreement with Purcell Cleaning. We also would ask that because Mr. Purcell has been cleaning the town hall since March without a contract, we have no method to pay him. So authorize us to allow that payment retroactively.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to be awarded a new three-year revised scope of service contract to, for the municipal facilities cleaning, beginning June 1st, 2021 to May 31st, 2024, at an annual contract rate of $76,276, or $76,276, available monthly at $6,356.33 to Purcell. That Purcell cleaning, Purcell.
Yep.
Or for cleaning.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? Mr. President, who, who is the contact person? And if something isn't cleaned correctly in the town hall, who is the contact person? If, if some department sees something that done correctly, or is it, who, who is the contact person that they need to contact?
We would contact the operations managers.
But from the town hall, who's the point person in the town hall?
Luke Kern or Jim Malakowski. We would email both of them.
Okay. Okay.
And if you, if you as a council member have a concern, you can bring it to me and I'll, I'll do the same thing.
But those are the two people that are actually, somebody, some staff person sees something, they contact Jim or, or Luke, okay?
Yes.
Is there some things that are being done within the town hall here that, you know, some of the doors that have tapes still stuck on them and things like that? And some of the kick plates, are, are we looking at how the town hall looks right now? And is there general improvements, some, some basic things that, that we can do as a staff? Or is that, some of it's cleaning, I'm sure, but there's some stuff that looks getting kind of worn out and things like that?
We are actually in the process of waxing the floors. The rear hallway you'll see has been waxed. The main hallway at the police station has. We have at the front door, a contractor that we've been working with to clean up that front entrance after we, we did the stairs and re-drain that to redo those doors. It's looking a little tired. That, that work is planned and budgeted for. We're also looking at the floorboards and chair rails throughout the facility being cleaned or painted, and then carpets in the common areas being cleaned as well. So that is top of mind, and we are on it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other discussion on this?
Can I? Is it worth noting that they have a kind of three-month period?
Sure.
Do you want that done in the same motion, or you want to do that as?
No, it's just, I don't know that it needs to be part of the motion. It's just as a, it's part of our discussion with Purcell. It was more or less agreed upon that they have three months really to exhibit, demonstrate an improved consciousness of loneliness in the building. And there is a 30-day out at any point in time, but the next 90 days, we're really going to be watching.
It's the probation period.
Exactly.
Which I think is really reasonable. I, I, I think we as a staff did a good job of expressing that, you know, these are public funds that we're spending, and we have a, we have a responsibility to make sure they're being spent wisely and effectively. So we, I was very proud to hear staff say that that's a responsibility that they took very seriously.
And Dustin, this $34,000 increase annually, is that commensurate with the increased scope of services?
I would say if you looked at the responses from other contractors, it is, it is.
And we've just been getting a good deal?
We had, it was a, it was a much pared-down scope. It was a very, very limited scope.
Which wasn't, clearly wasn't serving the town.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
All right, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
All right, that brings it up to the. Do we need to do anything with the authorized, the record? Okay.
Mr. President, so Chuck doesn't have to read it. I will move that we authorize retroactive payment to Purcell for the non-contract period, March 6th, 2021 through May 31st, 2021, effectively three billable months at the slightly increased non-contract rate of $3,675 per month, for a total of $11,025.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on the matter?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Steve Gunty for putting together this memo and kind of leading the administrative effort on this. So many thanks.
Brings it down to the South Shore Convention and Visitor Board of Directors of Point.
Mr. President, I move that we reappoint Matthew J. Maloney to the Board of Directors of the South Shore Convention Visitor, Convention and Visitors Authority for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
I was just wondering if we, at some point, would get a sort of portfolio report or board report from Mr. Maloney, an update on what's going on.
Sure.
Should I reach out to Mr. Maloney?
I, I did reach out to Mr. Maloney, and he said he was definitely interested in this report, so if he's doing a decent job, then I think he can come in to us and bring us a report this probably. All right, any other discussion?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
There are no reports tonight. That brings us to the portfolio reports. Or does anybody have a report that they would like to share with the council?
I do, just, just so everyone is aware, we are in the process of updating our software. It went live today, and it's not without a few pickups. Nothing significant, but there's a payment link that is an online payment link that is not yet active. The third party has the information. They haven't, we're at their mercy to get it done. So we hope that tomorrow is the day. And town hall will be open tomorrow for business as usual. But in order to catch up on and clean up some things with nominal interruptions, the clerk treasurer's office will be closed tomorrow to the public. Anyone that needs to make payments is, they can use the red draw box. And we will open as normal, 7:30 to 4:30 on Wednesday.
The, you know, I'm the appointed representative to the Hammond Sanitary Commission, and Mr. Hopkins and I are both a little concerned about a proposal that the commission is discussing to purchase the old Spohn stool. It was the building. It's not for sale. It's owned by Hammond Baptist Church. And the proposal was to purchase the building and then rent it back to the church. They use half the building, and maybe the other half of the building would be used for something else. But from my experience on the Munster Park Board, at one time, we wanted to use land behind the houses on White Oak Avenue for White Oak Park and leave the houses. And we bought the houses because that's the only way the sellers wanted to sell it, and we rented the houses. And it was a mistake. I don't remember if you were with us at the time, but it turned the park board, the park department into being landlords. but it turned the park board, the park department into being landlords. And, you know, we we were responsible for repairing the roof if it was a problem or if the heating was, the furnace wasn't working or the air conditioning wasn't up to standard. And we had problems that none of us on the park board or the staff was prepared for. And eventually we sold the houses, they were demolished, and we have White Oak Park today. And it's, it seems odd that there is no, there are no plans for the Hammond Sanitary Commission to use that land. It's right along the Grand Tymon River. They have land contiguous to it. And because we pay, because Munster taxes pay a good deal of the the cost of running the district. And so Munster citizens would be paying to purchase the building, which I remember correctly, Mike, in a previous example, that money was in, that a building purchased that way with Munster money was then given to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission. Had nothing to do with Munster, but we were paying for it anyway. And so I just wanted to alert the council to the, to the concern that we're having. And there's no motion or yet to purchase the property, but it does not seem to be a wise use of property.
Counselor Schoen, anybody else wish to share?
Did I say that as you would at my?
Yes, sir.
I could, I could give an update from the Plan Commission. Sort of a milestone reached, the Plan Commission approved the development plan for the first four-story office building at the Maple Leaf Crossing developments. So we have a large piece of limestone laying on the floor, inspecting the material.
What was the controversy about that? It was referred to, I saw either in the paper or. At the Plan Commission, do you have any controversy? Well, I'm not aware of any.
All right, that brings us to announcements. All Town Council meetings will be held at seven PM unless otherwise noted. May twenty-fourth, no meeting, May thirty-first, no meeting. June seventh, Redder Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. June fourteenth, no meeting. June twenty-first, Redder Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. June twenty-eighth, there is no meeting. Brings it down to adjournment.
I move that be adjourned.
There a second? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Seven did that? Thank you, Steve.
Getting adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight. John Castro, coming up. Good to see you. Making a hand.
All righty.
We were saving the seat for you.
Hey, thanks.
Yes. I'll make sure they sign it's name.
Yeah, yes. It's all right. No, oh, no.
I'm going to bring the Redevelopment Commission meeting to order when they broke home.
Commissioner Schoen?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner? Commissioner Tulowitsky?
Present.
And Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present. That brings us down to open to the public. Is there anybody interested in speaking at this meeting? Is there anybody online? I will close the open to the public. Brings us down to consent agenda.
President, I move we accept the consent agenda. There a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner? Commissioner Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
There is no business, under new business, we have the Main Street Station Architectural Service Contract.
Yeah, depending on the source of funds, we thought it would be prudent to also have the Redevelopment Commission's approval to use those funds. So same memo.
Yeah, makes sense.
All righty. Let's say commissioners.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into the, to agreement with professional service, professional services contract with CDM Smith Incorporated to provide architectural services for the Main Street commuter rail station at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Broke out, please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitsky?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
There are no reports, there are no announcements. Brings us down to adjournment.
May I just quickly say, I did not acknowledge Representative, School Board Representative John Castro's here in the meeting as well. My apologies for overlooking you.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I finally come up here and you shut the door.
I know, I was so busy writing. I was courting, I was doing the clerk role here and I got, and then with one person off and it was just.
Not a problem.
We're all good. So now I'm saying to adjourn.
If we're talking about things that we have omitted, we have omitted the fact that our clerk treasurer brought honor to the entire town of Munster day before yesterday when she received her master's in public administration at Indiana University Northwest. And she now has a master's degree. That's not an easy thing to get.
Thank you.
It's been great to meet you.
I'll put adjourned in. So moved. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
He needs to adjourn.